Good evening. I'd like to call the Marlboro School Committee to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no one joint, oh, well, Mr. Sanborn's presentation is under yours, right? Okay, so, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Whitcomb School interim principal. Whitcomb School Principal Angela House is expected to take a leave of absence from early December through late February. On Tuesday, October 18th, I held a voluntary staff meeting at Kane School. At that meeting, it was announced that current Kane Assistant School Principal, Mr. Rick LaCina, will assume the role of interim Whitcomb School Principal during Principal House's leave. I also notified Whitcomb staff on that same day. Ms. Lauren Yurkis, current Kane School ETL, will assume the role of interim Assistant Principal, and Mrs. Madeline Van Bresker, current school psychologist, will assume the role of interim ETL during Mr. LaCina's absence.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah.
I forgot to announce that Mrs. Matthews is joining us remotely. Hello, Mrs. Matthews. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Carry on.
I wanted to update everyone on the Superintendent's Corner. Each month, Dr. Scazza and I host a WMCT show called Superintendent's Corner. The goal of the show is to expand the topics and format that we communicate with community members on a regular basis. In October, we focused on the emotional needs of our students. Karen Rivera and Lindsay Castro, elementary school adjustment counselors, and Michelle Smith Packard, Marlboro High School Adjustment Counselor, shared different ways they support students, teachers, and families through the schools. Kayla Flority Dawson, wraparound coordinator, focused on the district's wraparound services, how families are referred to the wraparound services, and some of the supports provided. All four of these dedicated staff members provided detailed thoughtful information to the community. Thank you. Next month, we plan to host a panel discussion focused on homework across all grade levels. So people should tune into that discussion as well. We'll also be doing a little question and answer on background on additional principles at that time, too. Thank you.
So, are people able to access the shows remotely? I mean, I know remotely, but I mean after they're off the air.
Yes, they are not broadcast live. They are posted to the website afterwards, yes.
And so you can watch them at any time.
And anytime that's convenient. And you can fast-forward them to the good parts if you want.
Can you remind us what the first, because that one that you just described was the second.
The second one?
What was the first topic?
The first topic was we introduced the community to two of our new principals, Mrs. Patel and Mrs. Richards.
Perfect.
Oh, and ourselves.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Hennessy?
I just wanted to thank you that you're moving forward on having a discussion relative to homework coming up, because obviously, we've touched upon this a number of times, that it would help to just continue to make sure our communication is really clear about expectations, homework availability, and that, you know, teachers and parents should be having conversations around that. But I appreciate that you're going to be moving that forward for discussion, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Scazza?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to take some time tonight to provide another update around the restorative justice trainings that are happening in the district. Also, I wanted to give a little explanation around the tiers of restorative justice, so everyone is clear on which tier constitutes what. So, most recently, Jarwick Elementary finished another round of Tier One, and I'll explain exactly what that is momentarily, training with a new cohort of educators. Kane Elementary starts the first session of their next round of Tier One on October 26th, which is tomorrow. And after the Kane trainings, we will have approximately 350 staff members trained in the Tier One practices of restorative justice, as it applies to education. So right into the definition of the tiers, that Tier One is community building is really the focus. The Tier One training focuses on community building in the classrooms. Educators learn the principles of using circles, which is like a discussion format, and it's literally chairs formed in a circle with a talking piece and expectations for discussion. A set of community expectations are established in the learning environments. Participants are also taught how to apply the circle format to academic lessons, so... Initially, they are typically used to establish classroom community expectations or just strengthen the classroom community. But once students and teachers become more comfortable with the format, they're logical transition into an academic lesson as well. You can, everyone has an equal opportunity to share. You don't have to share, you can pass. But it provides for an opportunity for equal voice, whether it is contributing to the community in the classroom or contributing to the lesson in whichever content area. Tier Two is harm and conflict resolution, so this is typically a little bit of a smaller circle. It can be with two individuals, it could be with a smaller group of students, it can even be with staff members, honestly. And Tier Two focuses on smaller circles intended to repair harm that has been done. That's a term that Suffolk University uses with their restorative justice training. And the training is beneficial to all educators, but sometimes most applicable to roles in education where mediation is often part of daily routine. So a lot of our school counselors are trained in the Tier Two practices of restorative justice. The outcome of these smaller circles can help bring closure to situations where mistakes were made. The important thing to note is that everyone involved must be ready and willing to participate. So once everyone is comfortable and ready and willing to participate, the experience that I've had with Tier Two circles is that you can bring closure to situations and you can move on from there. There are typically follow-up circles at the end of that closure, just to make sure that everything is still, you know, good between individuals involved. But a lot of times, there's a successful outcome at the result of the initial circle. And then Tier Three is what we are not yet trained in. This is more for administrative teams or any school personnel who are involved with reintegrating students back to school or school community from suspension. So typically, the Tier Three training is intended to help school personnel successfully reintegrate a student back into the school community after a suspension. This tier involves the training of key individuals who are essential to the reintegration process and is typically, but not always, most applicable to the secondary level. We have a group of individuals representing all seven schools who will soon be trained in Tier Three practices. And just of importance, our restorative justice trainings are provided by the Center for Restorative Justice at Suffolk University, and we have been grateful for our partnership with Suffolk. Does anyone have any questions around restorative justice, the tiers, or where Marlboro Public Schools currently stands with implementation?
I guess I have one question regarding the Tier Two. So when you said it's a smaller group, does that imply that it's only individuals that were affected by whatever the wrong was? Which could be perpetrator and victim, I don't know if those are the right terms, but also, it could be people who witnessed?
Could be an argument out at recess, it could be, oh, that's an elementary example. It could be name-calling, it could be a number of situations that come through across the course of a school day. But yes, you're right, everyone who participates is either directly or indirectly involved. Sometimes it's the teacher, him or herself, who the harm has been done to, and the students are the ones who are working through the process of repairing harm that's been done to the teacher. Sometimes it could be a disagreement among team members on a grade-level team, faculty members, and they might hash out and resolve a situation through a circle format. So truly, the benefit that I found to it is that people have an equal voice and it's a safe environment. It gives everyone an opportunity to bring closure and be honest and vulnerable with each other, and the end result is typically good. They don't always work, sometimes there are some that go a little awry, and then you have to revisit that and come back. But from my experiences being part of or implementing a circle, we found a lot of success from the format.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just ask a little question off of that, just, I guess, for clarity, from my own understanding. With Tier One and Tier Two, but I guess around Tier Two specifically, is there more someone who's somewhat kind of the leader to make sure to keep everyone engaged and to provide opportunity to everyone, to make sure that everyone has, you know, the chance to be able to speak their mind, you know, have that opportunity? Because I think sometimes when you don't have someone there to kind of play that role, it's hard to get everyone engaged.
There is a facilitator, and there is a set of protocols that the facilitator follows. The most important is the talking piece, so whomever has the talking piece in the circle format is the one who is speaking, and everyone else is listening at that time. And then the talking piece can move in one of either directions around the circle, or the talking piece can be passed across the circle. There is typically a quote and a mindful moment that sets the tone for the circle, and then there is typically a closure quote and kind of a moment of closure at the end of the circle. But this is all facilitated by an individual who's been trained in the process.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Curriculum resource update.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Crusoe, sorry.
Where do the small circles take place?
That depends. We try to, from my experience at the elementary level, have them in settings where there isn't a stigma associated with the environment, if you will. So the principal's office is not always the best location. You just find a quiet and safe space where the limit for, the possibility for distractions is limited. It can be in the counselor's office, it can be in a space that's used for, you know, auxiliary purposes throughout the course of the day where there are limited distractions. There is part of the format where you actually put a tapestry in the middle of the circle. So you set it up so there's a level of comfort that's associated with the environment. So really, the long and short answer to your question is wherever there's a quiet space where privacy is available.
Now, does this take place during the school day, or could be after school?
It could be during the school day, after the school day, typically during. Typically, it's the day after, because it takes a little time to get everyone comfortable with participation. Some students are ready and willing to jump into a circle, some are a little bit more hesitant. So typically, it's during the school day after, you know, an incident happens the following day.
Okay, thanks.
All right, curriculum resource update, the Journeys program. Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt, HMH, commonly referred to, will be discontinuing the Journeys program. That's our ELA program resource. Mr. Sanborn, Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, has joined us tonight to discuss the next steps regarding the discontinuation of the Journeys resource and the transition to the revamped reading and writing program that Houghton Mifflin has produced. Additionally, grades six through 12 are currently piloting ELA curriculum resources, and Jody Reyes, Supervisor of Humanities six through 12, will be joining us at an upcoming school committee meeting to discuss the details regarding these programs. So we have Mr. Sanborn with us tonight.
Good morning, thank, oh, not good morning, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Once it returns back, there it is, on my screen. I just want to give you a brief overview of where we are in that particular process. As Dr. Scazza said, the transition has begun from the Journeys program to what we will be using through HMH known as inter-reading. So at the end of this school year, HMH will no longer be supporting their Journeys product. As HMH itself transitions Journeys into the inter-reading program, we researched and discovered that both the state and Ed reports recognize the inter-reading program as a highly rated research-based literacy program. So through the remaining school year, this school year, Journeys will remain as our core program. Beginning the fall of '23, we will be implementing the inter-reading program as our core ELA curriculum for grades K through five, for both reading as well as writing. The inter-reading modulators, or which are like units, each contain a social-emotional learning SEL component, which is a great supplement to our core SEL program, second step. The program also highlights several science and social studies themes that are commonly taught at each grade level. For example, second grade has the science theme of matter, which is one of our science units. And in third grade, there's a modular component focusing on the Revolutionary War, which complements the social studies unit that we have in third grade. It also contains both digital and print resources that introduce students to highly quality-grade appropriate texts that engage students and is designed to build or support their reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills. Inter-reading materials support teachers as they work with students across all grade levels and with varying degrees of English language proficiencies and development. This program provides teachers with access to more award-winning, high-interest stories for both whole class as well as for shared reading instruction than any other core program that's available. Grade-level titles are available in print form. However, in addition, all staff have access to the entire collection digitally to support all learners, whether they are at, above, or below grade level. In terms of feedback that we've had thus far from staff, it has been greatly positive. We've been very purposeful in our messaging with staff, remembering and the feedback that they had provided us with regards to past trainings and so forth, et cetera. Folks thus far have been truly appreciative of these trainings that they have been a part of. In our first two early release days thus far in the school year, we've reserved grade-level teams to receive an overview of the program as well as a tutorial for how to navigate the online platform and its resources. Currently, classroom teachers all have the printed materials available as well as online access to the digital platform for those wishing to further explore on their own. EL, Special Education and Reading Teachers, have full digital access to the entire program as they work with or serve as students throughout the entire elementary program. On December 7th, we will again be having a third training for folks who will focus on specifically the writing workshop portion of the inter-reading program. And again, that will occur with cohorts by grade level. And that concludes the brief overview I have available for you this evening, and I'd be happy to take some questions if you have any.
Go ahead, Hennessy.
Shocker. So, thank you. So, they're going to be discontinuing Journeys. I mean, I'm sure you've been spending a lot of time probably with all of this. Is there, like, something that we can still utilize, some of the materials that we've had, that are journeys, that will complement where they're going with this transition into this new program? I mean, it's, I'm just curious, because it's, it seems like a huge waste in some respects. I understand the why with the discontinuation, nothing that we can do, but there was some stuff that obviously was very decent. And is, are there ways of utilizing some of that material to then continue to benefit the program as we move into this new revamped program?
Well, with Journeys, with the materials that we have now, that will still be part of the work that we're doing this year. We have found through our research that the materials that are part of the inter-reading program are more towards and benefit not only our student population, but where we should be growing and moving. We all know that sometimes certain series or programs sometimes outlive themselves, or there is a need for a transition, which is the particular case here. And the resources that are available in inter-reading provide teachers with a greater set of materials that are more aligned with and better and more improved for 21st century skills. And some of the literature really meets the needs and looks a lot more like our student population than some of our other pieces. And things are just, not necessarily antiquated, but they have been improved. We were really impressed in our research in the work that HMH has done with the creation of this new program. And it really, one of the things that we have felt, and we received feedback from teachers as well, is how user-friendly it is. That things that were a little bit more cumbersome in the Journeys program, especially with their online platform known as Think Central, it wasn't the easiest platform to navigate, whereas the platform that is part of inter-reading is known as Ed. Teachers find it more as a one-stop shop, and it's very logical in terms of how you navigate what's available for them, what resources are available online. A lot of the materials allow them to just use on their smart boards, using the technology that they have available with greater efficiency. It has edible, editable lesson plans. The accessibility to the alignment to the state frameworks are instant. You just click a button and you can see all of the standards that are there. Those are pieces that were not existing in the Journeys program. So we feel confident that this transition is going to be beneficial. And as I said, so far, the teachers, with just the minimal time that they've had with it thus far, have been, have been pretty excited with it.
Mr. Sanborn, can I just jump in?
Sure.
Because there are going to be pieces, leveled readers or things like that from Journeys that some teachers may want to keep in their classrooms. And yes, absolutely, we've used them, we've purchased them, they can continue. The online platform is the same online platform that the middle school has been using for math for a couple of years. The Go Math is going to transition to that same program, so everything will be in this, on the same platform, so that will be helpful. There are also other pieces, such as, we've had a long discussion about the performance assessment that some of the teachers really like
Right.
at the elementary. So the idea of trying to make copy, you know, we own the ability to make copies of those, to not lose some of the pieces that have been really beneficial, is absolutely within our...
Yeah, and that's, I guess, the only reason I'm bringing it up. I'm not an educator. I don't really play one on TV either, you know, but I just feel like, obviously, we've been talking about Journeys for a long time, and not saying that that's like the best thing ever, but it seems like in some cases, you know, it could be beneficial for some kids to be able to take home some of that, to help to do some of their stuff at home, you know, to continue to push that reading opportunities. We have the materials. It would be great to see that we can kind of push that forward. And I think, I was looking like she was going to say something, so go for it.
Well, and just getting a new reading program, and then keeping some of the other pieces of Journeys, space becomes an issue in our classroom. We're housing our Journeys program that we're using right now on top of the new reading program. So boxes are stacked up, and it's like, you know, you've moved into a house and you still haven't unpacked. So I think that's a big concern with thinking about what pieces to use from Journeys next year because of space in our classroom. Because we want our classroom to be welcoming and not just filled with stuff. But if I, since my mic is on, if I could just also say, the, it's appreciated, the staff is appreciative of the fact that we're starting so early. I think the last two, the first two PD days with it, things are disjointed right now only because of the timing of where we are in the school year. But as the year goes on, you know, we're expecting things to just fall in place and when we have those extra few minutes to look at the inter-reading program and as we're getting the trainings, you know, we're, the hope, the hope is, and we know that things will start to fall in place and things will start to make more sense. The other piece that's appreciative is that we're using the writing that is in the inter-reading, that writing piece. I think for our planning purposes, it just makes it smoother and it's a nicer transition than using something completely different. So that's something that I just wanted to pass along, that is, we're going to, we're looking at it as a good benefit for ourselves and our students.
Thank you, appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Can, can you, I had actually had a conversation with the mayor about this transition, and he had some questions, so I'll just pose them on his behalf. Can you just tell us, like, what was your process in terms of going to this particular product? Did you look at other products? Was it just a natural progression because it was the same company? Do you have a team of people that were looking at it? Like, what was your process?
Ms. Murphy, do you want to take that?
Yeah, we started realizing that Journeys, we had, we had a couple of different things that we looked at. We had, we're limited in what we could move forward with because we had to look at both the state current website on what is research-based, high-quality instruction, and Ed reports. As, as school-wide Title I schools, we had to make sure that we were aligned on those two. We looked at a couple of different options, but then we also looked at the rubrics that we had used in the past when deciding to go with Journeys. And through that process, so that was a transition with the same, this is the latest inversion of Journeys. And so when we looked at what would be the smoothest transition, that was, there was a small team that looked at it, and that was the decision. We decided to continue with the transition. It allowed us to continue with Journeys for one year with no cost at all as we transitioned to a new program.
And that team had teachers?
It had mainly the literacy leaders at the elementary.
Thanks.
You just made me think of something else. From, from a budget standpoint, then, we've had, what, some money that would have hit within this budget, I'm sure, to get some of the preparation materials, and then we're going to have other money that will then move forward for more materials? You know, for next year? Just curious.
We've, we're able to fund this entire purchase with end-of-year monies from FY22.
Beautiful. That's what I like to hear, utilizing money in the right way.
I was going to say, you really like that answer, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you. That's great.
Anybody else? Mrs. Matthews, anything? You're good? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanborn.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Dr. Scazza, your own staff?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm just going to steal the mic from Mrs. Matthews for a second. No, it should be okay. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations, starting with the increase on special education private school tuition, the projected increase. The Operational Services Division, or OSD, at the State's Executive Office for Administration and Finance, has released a memo estimating that the authorized increase in special education private school tuition for FY24 will be 14%. In FY22, this number was 2.5%. And the average increase, average annual increase since 2011 has been 1.8%. So this is a significant event. The increase in special education tuition costs would have a significant impact on Marlboro's FY24 operating budget. Assuming that all of the placements as they exist today remain, this would be a nearly $475,000, nearly $500,000 increase to our budget, or 0.7% of our operating budget. If collaboratives, again, collaboratives are different because they have a board that contains superintendents, so the superintendents will have a say through a vote. If collaboratives follow suit and also implement a similar type increase, the total impact to Marlboro overall goes from $475,000 to $650,000, which is just about 1% of our operating budget. If left unchanged, the Circuit Breaker reimbursement program would absorb, would start absorbing some of this cost in FY25, but for FY24, this would essentially be an unfunded mandate and the responsibility of municipalities. I just wanted to bring that to the school committee's attention as we start preparing to develop... as we start preparing to develop our FY24 budget. And knowing that we have provided the school committee and city council with a four-year, forward-looking funding plan, this is an impact, something that we obviously could not have predicted when we first established that funding plan. There is opportunity here for boards such as this and administrators such as us to voice our concern. And I guess this is us doing exactly that. Because again, there is, at this point, an unfunded mandate. It's not final yet. I believe that this memo is something that the OSD provides so that the state can then start developing their budget based on such predictions. So, that was the first part of my report. Second part of my report is talking about food services. I wanted to have the committee know that the program continues benefiting from having universal school meals. This is something that's in place all over the state, but will remain in effect in Marlboro through the next four years. The last normal benchmark year that we have is FY20. That September was pre-COVID. So, comparing FY20 September to FY22 in September, we saw, we've seen a rise in lunch participation of just about 2.2% and a big rise in breakfast participation of 7% more. So, it was 57% in FY20, it's 59% in FY22 for lunch, and 24.6% in breakfast participation in FY20, and now we're just under 32% in FY22. We have lofty goals. I discuss this often with the team and I believe all the food service managers are on board. We want to start going towards 75 participation in school lunch throughout all the schools. I think September started a little bit slowly. It's hard for us to get super creative right now, given the logistics issues that we're having in addition to the recent strike that has taken place. I am hopeful that when I report this number in October, we'll see a bigger delta there and as the year progresses and we return to more normal supply chain, we'll see even greater strides in participation. So, we'll continue working on this number. My usual reminder to families that every school meal that we serve helps the district and their school financially. We get reimbursed at 100% right now. So, if families can allow their children to participate, we are very appreciative. FY23, yellow bus transportation. I didn't, this changes daily, so I didn't make comments at the time that I submitted this for the agenda. Unfortunately, what was true two weeks ago when I last reported to the school committee is still true today. We have six routes that are open and we have one route that has a long-term absence. So, that's seven seats. As of this afternoon, we had four drivers that were taking a CDL test. So, they have gone through the 60-hour training and they're ready to test. Those four drivers were supposed to test for the Marlboro contract. Unfortunately, an hour before the meeting, I got a call that we had lost two of those drivers. So, we have two drivers testing for Marlboro. One tests tomorrow, the other one tests hopefully by the end of the week. In addition to those two drivers, there are five others training for the Hudson Hub. They are going through their 60-hour training right now. I don't know yet how many of those are coming to Marlboro. Obviously, I advocate every day that we get as many of those drivers as possible for our contract. We remain actively involved in this. Mr. Phelan, in the Transportation Office, has been able to put a lot of the impacted students, as the school committee knows, we have four routes right now, three at the middle school, one at the high school, that are impacted in the afternoon. Mr. Phelan has been able to take some of the students that live further away from the school and put those students in routes that are existing right now, that are running. So, we've been able to make some positive shifts. But obviously, the ideal scenario is getting seven drivers so that we can have all of our routes running every day on time. That's what we're striving for. That is my update tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
So, I will just comment that I don't know how the Operational Services Division thinks they're going to pull off this kind of an increase. I mean, I don't see how any district can absorb that kind of an increase in such a short period of time. So, the Operational Services Division is part of the governor's administration. It's not part of the treasurer, it's not under the treasurer, correct?
I'm not sure who they're under.
Well, it's under the State's Executive Office for Administration and Finance. So, I don't know if that.
Not sure exactly.
Executive office is the governor. So, who knows? Well, as luck would have it, we are, some of us, going to be at the Cape shortly with a lot of people. I do know that the current treasurer is speaking, as is the Commissioner of DSE. Will be down there with us. So, there's going to be the opportunity for people to make our concerns known to some people down there. But, you know, any recommendations that, and I don't expect you to give an answer now, but recommendations that you all have as to how we can advocate, you know, for the district and to whom and?
So, a lot of folks are very concerned. I personally see this primarily as an FY24 issue because again, Circuit Breaker reimburses 75% of tuitions for private school beyond the foundation budget. So, say $50,000, if it's $100,000, everything over $50,000, 75% of it would be reimbursed by Circuit Breaker.
In arrears, though.
Yes, exactly.
So, we wouldn't even get it to FY26.
So, we wouldn't see that until FY25. We wouldn't spend that until FY26 because we are one of the fortunate districts that carry forward one full year of Circuit Breaker. But for FY24, it would remain unfunded. So, there's multiple ways for the state to help us resolve that. They can provide a one-time source of funds for FY24 to address this specific issue. They could raise the historical ceiling of Circuit Breaker reimbursement for FY23 and they can give us more than 75% so that we can then carry over into FY24 an amount that would take away some of this increase for districts. There's multiple ways to solve the problem. Or we could go back and decrease 14% to a more reasonable number that districts can start competing with. Because there's going to be some potential other issues that arise from this number being utilized. So, I think there needs to be a bigger conversation around this.
Yeah, I thought I'd recalled that for the private school special education tuition, that there couldn't be more than a 10% increase maximum a year. And I, I mean, like, this was from a number of years ago, having some discussions around it. But I thought, like, they're letting, you know, they have to alert people by like October or something relative to the next year and that it couldn't be over a max of a 10% of whatever the change.
We generally start receiving notifications from private schools between now and February, March because they know that we're preparing our budget for next year. A lot of the increases that we've seen are very specifically tied to this OSD rate. The OSD would issue a similar type memo. But again, over the past 11 years, the average has been 1.8. The largest that we've seen was 1.5, I think one year was maybe, I'm sorry, 2.5, one year was 2.7. So, this is significantly above what anyone was prepared for.
Yeah, I'll say it, outrageous, that's okay. That's, it's ludicrous to think that any districts are going to be able to start shouldering anywhere near any of these funds. I mean, we're fortunate that, you know, our community in working with the city council, I mean, we've all worked hand-in-hand together quite well. But it absolutely is ludicrous to think that any districts are going to be able to shoulder this kind of rate. And these are our students. We all have a responsibility of needing to meet the services, but not by them thinking that they can hold us hostage. I mean, that's, this is just crazy money. So, I guess we'll be talking to a lot of people next week at the state conference. I've gone after a few leaders of DSE over the years and?
Well, it's not DSE.
Well, no, but I mean, no, but it's talking to the people to get people's attention, you know. Yay. Sorry for being very bad, Mr. Gary.
Any, I mean, any insight as to the cause of 10x the height of, I mean, the increase?
The memo had an inflationary increase for a lot of the aspects of operating school. That rate was similar to what we saw in the Chapter 70 funding formula. It's around 4.9%. But in addition to that, it also added what they call a, I forget the exact terminology, but it was a personnel adjustment of nearly 10%.
So, from one year last year, which was 2.5, yeah?
Uh, yes, yep.
So, five times as much for one year?
I think some of the.
I'm just asking for insight as to what we.
Some of the justifications that I've been hearing within my circle is that the private schools has experienced labor shortage, just like we have during COVID. And they have had to take on additional costs to attract and maintain labor. And this increase would be us municipalities helping the private schools attract and maintain their labor force.
As we all struggle to maintain our own and don't have the luxury of charging our municipalities an additional 14%.
And there are, and I don't mean in any way to disparage, to share information, there are some recruiting practices that may have taken place in the private sector that we could not afford to do.
Of course.
And couldn't have done, so.
So, this is like they're passing the buck without passing the bucks. That's what they're doing, basically, to us. You know, this, we're getting the increases for doing the same thing that we're doing. No one's giving us the money to cover those same recruiting issues either. The other thing is, this is all, this is all generated from a financial standpoint by the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, right? This is all coming from that office. It's not, I mean, I guess it is sort of education-based, but it's not like educational policy-based when they come up with this number, is it? It's just purely financial?
Operational Services Division oversees the financial services for all of the state, not just education-based. I think part of what they do is establish this rate which allows private education schools to raise tuitions based on their expected CPI rate. So, it's essentially an opinion memo with a prediction of what the increase is going to look like. But we have already received, I have already received at least one notice from one school estimating that their increase for next year will be exactly 14%.
Imagine that.
And I know it's early in the year to be speculating this, but will, you know, as we work through this issue, can we get an idea of how many students we're talking about?
Yes. Assistant Superintendent O'Brien has been looking at those numbers as I know that Mr. Diaz has as well. So, we have been looking at that.
Can we move to other sections?
Our food service, yep.
So, good on you all for the food services on a regular basis. I give you huge kudos on all of that. I just was curious with Cisco having some of their issues with logistics, did that impact any of our program?
Oh, because you had mentioned supply chain issues and a strike. And I don't know anything about a strike.
And that's why I was asking about Cisco.
Yes.
Yes, that's why I was asking.
So, Cisco provides us with at least 50% of the, it's one of our major suppliers of food supplies. And they, I believe they're still in an active strike right now, their driver forces. And there have been memos circulating about potential impact to distribution of food to all of their clients, which include schools, medical facilities, and other private sector businesses. They have prioritized deliveries to schools and hospitals, medical facilities. The impact to us has been delayed deliveries as well as, instead of three times a week, we may be getting them twice a week. But we quickly implemented a larger supply at our drive storage as well as our freezers so that we could maintain two weeks' worth of what we would need to serve. So, we are two weeks ahead of any particular issues that could arise. Again, it limits us a little bit in menu creativity. We are not concerned at this point in being able to serve meals at our schools. We have not experienced that issue, except that one day in one school, we had to change one menu item over the last two weeks. That has been the impact to Marlboro so far. So, I appreciate Pam, our food service director, Pam Willen, and her team at the schools adjusting their ordering practices quickly once we learned about the strike so that we could have a larger inventory in hand to be able to serve our kids.
So, thank you, because that's what I had been wondering, if that was one of our suppliers, I was pretty sure. But just out of curiosity, and I guess my question would be if this is going to continue with Cisco, I'm assuming we're looking at what other opportunities can we have on sourcing of product to support our food services?
Yes, so thankfully, we have Aramark as a food service management company. Aramark services the education world, but also hospitals, universities. They're a massive, multi-billion dollar company with very capable sourcing managers. I don't think it will rise to the level that we have to procure a different vendor. Although Aramark has promised us that they are looking at all options. What has happened for Cisco to be able to maintain services is that they were able to find a group of drivers from other states and quickly bring them over to Massachusetts to, again, it wasn't a one-for-one exchange, but they've been able to do that. I'm very curious about how they were able to do that for my yellow bus transportation. Because I wasn't successful in doing that, although I tried. But I guess Cisco has deeper pockets than we do.
And then my last question was around that yellow bus transportation thing. So, we had four, now we're down to two. Is that because two are going to another district? Or do you even know?
So, I do know. Some of it is private and I can't share. But I can share that one of the drivers that had been slating for Marlboro at the last minute has said, "I will either drive for this other contract or I won't drive at all." So, therefore, the decision was made to not lose that driver. So, throughout the training, throughout the onboarding, Marlboro was the original destination. You know, what I'm grateful for, though there's a lot that I'm concerned about, is that we have been given priority on new drivers being onboarded. These four that were slated for us were the first four drivers testing for a CDL since the beginning of September and they were all coming to us. Except that one had to drop off for personal reasons and another one is going to a different contract, not because they were assigned a different contract, but because there's been a personal choice.
Mrs. Matthews? Can't hear you. Are you on mute? Are you on mute? It was working.
Working earlier.
Call in. Here, ready? Pick up.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Okay, turn off something.
Turn off the mic.
Oh, we got no feedback. From where?
It sounds like it's coming through the phone, yeah.
It's her computer.
Okay, oh. Turn.
Then she won't be able to hear us.
Yes, she will, because it'll be through here.
Oh, okay.
Turn off, uh, turn off the stuff on the computer.
Is that the hamster running the computer in her house?
Okay, how about this? Talk to me, and then I'll say it.
I don't think that's legal.
Oh, it's not legal?
Mm-mm.
Darn. Trying, sorry.
We did hear her earlier.
I know.
Was it because it was through the other TV or? Hold on.
The microphone is set over there.
Second please, your call is very important to us.
Maybe. Would you see if this device here has charged with spin plug in? Because this was working prior.
One second, please. I know.
We spent two hours here as part of our task, so it's been up to work.
And it was working.
It was, and it was plugged in, but apparently it wasn't holding charge, so. Doesn't look to be what it...
Oh.
I can, um, I can stop the, on my computer and then rejoin and see if that will work.
Sure, I'll try that.
Do you need to, like, adjourn the meeting for a minute?
Maybe we can, for those at home sitting here waiting for us to do something. We can take a brief recess. Let's see, if this doesn't work initially, then we'll have to take a recess.
Okay.
Okay, you see her on your computer?
Ms. Matthews, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay.
But we can't see you on the big screen.
That's what I can use that.
Okay.
Just for now.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, actually, hold on, since we're doing this.
I can't see you guys, but I can hear you.
I'm going to fix that in just a second.
Okay.
All right.
There we go.
Excellent.
Yay. Regarding the food services, Cisco settled five days ago, so there's no issue.
Perfect.
So, so that, that's a non-issue as it is, as though, that was my little statement for there.
Now we just need the kids to eat more.
Yes, thank you for that good news.
Yes, thank you.
Did you want to chime in on anything else? Any thoughts on...
On the, on the special education, I assume that it's similar to like what the insurance board does and all of those, that they have to request this, this estimated increase and get approval for it. I know, as, as you said, Michelle, that the, you know, Suzanne Bump's going to be at the conference, and I know her report just came out about the unfunding of all of these mandates, and, and obviously with the amount of money that the Commonwealth is sitting on and has not dispersed, even though by law they're supposed to have already dispersed that, maybe some of that could be shifted to, to these unfunded mandates. Even though I'm sure taxpayers would like to see them returned to them, this is also a return to taxpayers' money too, by having the, the money go to the resources that need it most. So, I'm sure you guys will get in the ears of the people that need to hear it next week. I have no worries about that, so. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I have one other question with regarding the bus transportation. So, I know a few people that, that drive buses for different districts or schools, whatever, and some of them have gone out of state for a period to cover, but obviously it's, it's financially advantageous for them, I'm not sure how much so. Do we have people coming from other areas? Is, or is this the same across the country?
The, the driver shortage, not just school bus, but CDL in general, that's nationwide. It, it is my opinion that the shortage is deeper in Marlboro, because the, the rate that we had originally stipulated within the contract was, we went out to bid sooner than all the districts around us, and so therefore our drivers right now are getting a rate that's a little bit lower than some of the other districts around us. So that just makes us less choice, or at least not the first choice. That is part of the issue. Now, the reality is that we have a contract for service. We did not set a ceiling, we set the floor. Our contract does not say you cannot pay more than, it says you cannot pay less than. So that is something that we are actively working on with the transportation vendors since the beginning of the school year. But I don't know if that answers your question.
I didn't know if any, if we had explored any bringing people in from outside of our, you know, realm that we normally work in. Like, not like from Hudson and from other, but like out of state, maybe from New Hampshire, from New York, whatever. I don't know if, I know people that go the other way. I haven't heard of anybody.
We, that was part of the conversation that we had early on with NRT. One example is that they had, for a brief period, explored the idea of going into Puerto Rico, finding, say, a fleet of thirty drivers, putting them up in hotels, and helping, having those drivers service the nearby contracts. Unfortunately, that idea did not run for very long. There were multiple reasons why it didn't work. There's also potentially going into other areas of the state, west of, you know, western Mass, and getting drivers and doing the same thing, putting them up in hotels. The district had, at one point, even offered to do that as a joint venture financially, so that we could better service the students. Unfortunately, we were told that the effort was made, but we just cannot source enough drivers. We, so, in my last report, I believe I shared that the, the Hudson Hub of NRT, which services five contracts, they were short about fifteen drivers. Half of those seats are ours, so that's why I say that we are suffering the most, but we are not alone in not having enough drivers. And NRT also operates in North Relling, Lowell, north of the state, and they're struggling there as well. I don't know honestly the extent of that shortage, but I do know that they are short as well. And during, when we were doing our hybrid education model during FY twenty-one, I believe, we were able to get some drivers from up north to come and help us daily. But at that point, some districts were using their drivers significantly less than we were. But we were not able to re, revisit that model for this fiscal year.
So, uh, somebody in the community asked me about National Guard as drivers, that there are some districts apparently doing that?
Uh, so the National Guard was used, they were called up last year by Governor Baker, and they took on the role of seven-D drivers. Part, yes, those are the vans, the small, the small vans, seven-person vans, those are the, the seven-D vans. The licensing process for seven-D vehicles is significantly easier. You can become a seven-D driver almost over the weekend.
Yeah.
The CDL, and this is, there's a very good reason for this, the CDL licensing process is significantly more involved, so I don't see how, so even if you are in, in the military and you're driving large vehicles and you have a CDL, you still need to have your student endorsement, which requires, again, if I hire a Cisco driver today and they have a CDL, they still need to do forty hours of training behind a school bus to get their, their student endorsement, because driving a school bus is a very specific type of skill that you have to learn. So I don't think the National Guard is driving the yellow school bus, but they may be assisting still with some seven-D.
Yeah. Huh. I didn't realize that that was a, a thing, you know, this student-driver thing. Wow. Well, keep plugging at it.
We're working on it every day.
Thank you for all the creative things that you and Mr. Phelan are dealing with. Anybody else? Anything else for Mr. Diaz? Seeing none. Acceptance of the October eleven minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, take a roll call vote. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
I apologize for laughing. At the last meeting, I forgot Mrs. Ryan's name, so she is flashing her name at me, so I won't forget this time. And the chair votes yes, the minutes are approved. Public participation, public participation. Seeing none. Action items, acceptance of donations and gifts. So, we have from Donors Choice, Good Now, Miss Sequenzia's classroom, four hundred seventy dollars and fifty-four cents, and also at Good Now, Miss Thresher's classroom, two hundred fifty-three dollars and three cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Also from Donors Choice, to Good Now, Mrs. Holdman's classroom, two hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, Miss Holdman's classroom, and Miss Sheets's classroom, fifty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Massachusetts DSC, FY twenty-three, FC four-sixty, Early College Support Grant, forty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, forty thousand and two hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Mass DSC, FY twenty-three, FC one-seventy-five, Early College Full Expansion, eight thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And lastly, Mass, Massachusetts DSC, FY twenty-three, FC two-zero-nine, Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant, nine hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eight dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. They are all approved. Thank you very much. Reports of School Committee Subcommittee's. Mrs. Hennessy?
So, um, policy has a few more that we need to get through before we start it all over again, so expect a little email love note coming your way, so that we can get back on deck for another policy Subcommittee meeting coming your way soon. Thank you very much.
Anything to add, Mrs. Matthews? Nothing?
Nothing.
Members Forum.
Mrs. Hennessy. Thank you.
Now I'm due.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, you go.
That's okay. Just quickly, that I have reviewed the warrant, but if somebody could please sign it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. I've been going to my MIAA meetings on behalf of MASC. I sit on both Field Hockey Committee and Sports Med, and actually was asked to be on the MIAC, where we review waivers throughout the state, which I will say has been really, really interesting, and I feel like it's helpful, because we can really have an impactful discussion, and specifically with having that school committee hat on, we can have discussion around diversity and equity issues, on making sure that, you know, that's, that's an element that's thought about, because sometimes I have to say, some of the rules that maybe are in place currently have not necessarily been so supportive towards diversity and equity issues across the board, especially with our state being like a shelter state. We do have a lot of folks coming at different points and times into the district, as our district has, you know, raised in population that will come in throughout the year. So that's been interesting, and I think it's been helpful to have that perspective with our district and mine. I also wanted to just kind of say it out loud, because we're getting into tournament time, and they are instituting something where they're trying to make sure that the seating process is as appropriate and fair as possible. They have issued information onto their website, everything's gone out to superintendents, as well as the athletic directors, about cutoff timeframes for when they'll be pulling down the scheduled game listings for wins and losses that will be used for seedings. That information basically will kind of like sit for twenty-four hours, allowing for everyone to be able to review their information in case there are any concerns. If there are concerns, then it's supposed to then work in through the process of emailing back, copying, if it's, you know, we use as an... back, copying, if it's, you know, we use as an example when we were in the Field Hockey Committee, if there was an issue between a game that, say, Marlboro and Tinsborough were playing, that, and, uh, and the athletic director, so Jeff Rosensky, would need to email the appropriate person at MIA, but also copy in Tinsborough. So it, it's kind of a mutual agreement on whatever those changes are. And then essentially, within that next twenty-four hour, the final slate for seating will be happening. So that's for all of this, um, fall sports. Um, but as well, there's, um, another opportunity, because sometimes there's, um, division changes that happen, um, for each of the different seasons, and if there is a need to be moving from, say, a Division One to a Division Two or Division Three, um, now's the time that, um, districts need to be moving that forward to, for consideration by MIAA. So I just thought you guys should be aware of it, because I think, um, that is occurring, um, for some things that Marlboro is involved in. Um, but to the best of my knowledge, that has already been moved forward. But, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just wanna add that I had the opportunity to go to Reality Fair yet again this year. Couple of us were able to go. Just a great day. Great to see the kids really engaged, very engaged. And I think the Rotary Club that puts it on, uh, did, made some tweaks this year that made it even more accessible to some of our students whose English isn't, you know, their first language, and, um, just, it was great. Good energy, great, great program. So thank you to the Rotary for once again putting it on, and, um, for all the students for participating. Any comments down at that end of the table? Nothing today? Okay. Great. Okay? Entertainer motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. We are adjourned at eight forty-three.
Thank you.